For all them years, they came here half an hour early and at three times, you come like right out of the office to get a reputation.
Six o'clock, we'll call the special works session, council meeting, I will make it to the order. We have a forum, public forum, individuals may address the city council, what items not included on the agenda, speakers are required to state their name and address for council records, limit the remarks to three minutes or less. Speakers are requested to frame their comments around items that fall within the authority of the city council, during which the council will not take official action on the items discussed at this time. You may place the item on file, take the matter under advisement, refer the matter to staff or committee for future report, or direct the matter to be placed on the upcoming agenda. Anyone wish to speak?
Again, you're kidding, right?
Nope.
Hopefully, we need to ask him more.
It's just a boy, yeah, it's a boy.
Yeah, I know you do. Robin Hensel, 807 First Street Southeast. "The Lie of Patriotism" by Chris Hedges, and these are just excerpts. When Rory Fanning, who happens to be the man, the veteran who walked across the United States to earn a million dollars for the Pat Tillman Fund, a burly veteran who served in the 2nd Army Ranger Battalion and was deployed in Afghanistan in 2002 and 2004, appeared in Chicago last month, he was wearing the top half of his combat fatigues. As he moved through the crowd, dozens of Trump supporters shouted greetings such as "Welcome home, brother," and "Thank you for your service." Then came the protest that shut down the rally. Fanning, one of the demonstrators, pulled out a flag that read "Vets Against Racism, War, and Empire." Immediately, someone threw a drink on me, he said. "I got hit from behind in the head three or four times, it was quite the switch, quite the pivot on me." Questioning the narrative, questioning Donald Trump's narrative, and I was suddenly out of their good graces. Nationalists do not venerate veterans. They venerate veterans who read from the appropriate patriotic script. "America is the greatest and most powerful country on earth. Those we fight are depraved barbarians, our enemies deserve death, God is on our side, victory is assured. Our soldiers and Marines are heroes." Deviate from this, and no matter how many military tours you may have served in, you become despicable. The vaunted patriotism of the right wing is about self-worship. It's a raw lust for violence. It's blind subservience to the state. And it works to censure the reality of war. A lot of soldiers who've come back from war see themselves as anything but a hero. To throw that term around loosely is dangerous, it's a way to manipulate soldiers and buys their silence. Soldiers are not encouraged to talk about the realities of war when they come back, he said. They're labeled a hero or warrior, that's a major problem. It leads to seclusion, isolation with soldiers. We talk about the suicide rates among veterans, twenty-two a day. It's because we're not allowed to talk about what we saw. War up close bears no relation to the myth. It's depraved and cruel, and has nothing to do with noble ends or justice. Killing is a dirty, ugly business. There's a vast disparity between war's reality and the myth peddled by the press, the entertainment industry, politicians, and churches. What I didn't know as I entered Afghanistan with the 2nd Army Ranger Battalion was that the Taliban had essentially surrendered after the initial assault by the Air Force and the Special Forces, Fanning said of his first tour. "Our job was essentially to draw the Taliban back into the fight. Surrender wasn't good enough." For politicians after 9/11, we wanted blood, we wanted a head count. We were creating enemies. Soon after arriving in Afghanistan, I realized I was only creating the conditions for more terrorist attacks. It was a hard pill to swallow. We were essentially bullies.
Just a quick curious question, what is, everything you addressed tonight, what do you expect the city council in Little Falls to do with that?
As much as you do with Colonel St. Silver's baloney about the economic impact statement and his environmental baloney when he's in violation of the law right now. The very law is to protect our citizens from pollutants and water quality.
So that has something to do with Mr. Whoever in Afghanistan?
If he can talk about non-city related business, that's non-city delivery services business, so can I.
I didn't say that he couldn't, I didn't say you can't, I'm just curious, what you want us to do? What do you expect us to do with what you got?
Listen, same as you do with him, what do you do with what he gives you?
Okay, I was just wondering, if you really expected us to do something with your soldier in Chicago there, you know, that's something you could probably take to the White House and go preach to Obama.
I think Colonel St. Silver should take his stuff somewhere else, maybe to the lawsuit.
Anyone else wish to speak? Do you not want to move on to regular consal Adams? City Code Chapter 3 ordinance amendments and related fees?
I'll ask Nick to step up and give a presentation, we did some research and are looking to support ordinance adding tap rooms to licenses in the city of Little Falls.
Alright, so in page 53, it's 59 of your PDF. Ordinance number 87, amending City Code Chapter 3 Beer, Wine, and Liquor. Section 3.08 entitled "Kinds of Licenses." This ordinance amendment adds licenses in paragraphs Q, R, S, and T for a micro-distillery cocktail room, micro-distillery off-sale, small brewer off-sale intoxicating, and Sunday growler off-sale intoxicating. All license conditions are in accordance with Minnesota Statute of Chapter 340A concerning liquor. And paragraphs N and O that were rewritten in the beginning were rewritten to accommodate for the inclusion of these new license fees.
So there's a couple distinctions when it comes to the licensing, we already have on the books the group pub licensing, but that's a limited amount in terms of gallons that can be produced. And it has to be a secondary sort of licensing to restaurants. That it's, the primary function is restaurant first, onsite brewery second. So it's kind of your granite cities of the world, where they brew their own beer onsite. Taproom distinction is kind of what's been called the Surly Law, where the brewer actually, that's their primary function is to be able to produce and also serve on premise, yet many of them still distribute out to a larger portion. So their larger business model is going to be the distribution of their beer in the public or micro-distillery, but they can allow for consumption on their premise. Does not preclude or have to include restaurant. A lot of the ones that we've seen pop up do like at food trucks or other, allow for people to bring food onsite to consume, but they don't produce anything there, so.
Tell John that'll be allowable?
So yeah, with the passage of this ordinance, so then that production is up to 250,000 gallons in a year.
Is it the current law as far as wanting an establishment that sells liquor, you have to offer food to?
Yeah, if you're going to produce your own beer or liquor onsite, you would need to also sell food.
Onsite?
Yeah, so this is in accordance with what the state has now allowed, and the state also regulates these producers. They have to go through a pretty strict process to get license approval. So if they're already approved for the city of Little Falls, then they've gone through a lot of scrutiny that the state also has as well before, you know, we're going to be licensing them. They're not going to be producing without the state also giving them that authority, so.
And I can add to, in the land use or zoning ordinance for the city, liquor stores are allowed by conditional use in B1, in the B1 district. And brewing isn't allowed until the I2 district. But this allows, because of the step zoning, it's not going backwards. It's allowing the brewing in the higher land use district.
Anyone have any questions? Anything else to add, Nick?
Nope, that's it.
John?
We have received an applicant for, to the EDA looking to start a brewery in Little Falls. And also been approved by both the EDA and community development. To be in accordance with this, that brewery wouldn't be able to start up until the fall, there's something with the licensing review process with the state right now. But in order for them to be in compliance, we would have to have enforcement moments like this in place to offer that.
Other questions, if you want the economic development authority, Starry-eyed breweries financed?
So again, as is just mentioned, and I can pass this over to Lori too for more information, the EDA did approve a gap financing for Starry-eyed Brewery along with the community development of Morrison County.
You know, when you go into other communities, they have these micro breweries and these tap houses, they do real well, generate a lot of business.
Yeah, they have a significant, I mean, our gap financing is only for a small portion of the remaining funds that they're borrowing to get this up and running. But the presentation that they made is very, was well researched, the brewer, the main brewer that will be running it has brewed, we listed off probably half a dozen different breweries in the state, and one including Indeed Brewery, which is in northeast Minneapolis. They're one of probably the next, like the first ones to kind of take this new ordinance or new state regulation and kind of run with it after Surly got the law passed. And have done a really successful job in implementing the onsite brewing, taproom feel with a good distribution plan. It's all over the state now, very good, very good quality product. And so I'm excited that the brewer has, it's had about a hundred, over a hundred recipes. Planning to have anywhere from ten to twenty brews on a taproom in good time. And one other item with the site that they're looking to develop, they have enough land in the area to also be able to produce their own hops onsite as well, so.
John, also, the banker said that that was one of the best presentations he had received, and they went through the small business development of Brainard.
Yep.
And they're really impressive. Most prepared I've seen in all the times, we've looked at potential businesses.
Yes.
And if you check some of the tourism statistics that draws in communities, people look for little out-of-the-way places like this, they're kind of deep in that.
It could be a nice tour of breweries with St. Paul and Sacra Rapids, having a couple, Brainard and Nisswa even having a few too. It could be a nice little drive on the, coming back on Sundays since they have, they do allow for a growler and onsite sale on Sundays for these places. Nice little drive back from the metro, a good stopping point to get them off of 371 and into our town, too, so.
As long as you don't give them too much.
No, not too much. They're great for sampling, it's that, I've been to a few, it's an awesome place just to go get a flight of beers so you can sample five to six of just little two to three ounce glasses, but you get to find the ones you like and then take home a growler or a, you know, a large bottle to have at home. So I think that's an exciting opportunity for starting here.
And I don't know if you mentioned it, John, but it's Little Falls graduates coming back to the community, they definitely seem to be happy to leave, and you're seeing more and more of that. We met with a couple today on Project Review that already have a business in the community, so I think it's extremely exciting that these people are looking forward to coming back at their own time and giving something back to the community.
How many people would they possibly employ?
They talked about probably seven, ten, depending on the success of the taproom. They only need a, you know, a few brewers during the week. Operations typically are like Thursday to Sunday, and then they'll take the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday days to do the actual brewing of the beer. So during the taproom hours, they have more staff because you need servers and bouncers and, you know, people just to manage that. But brewing operations itself probably just the head brewer and then a couple other secondary employees for that, who can also, you know, do bartending and help out, but I think that's.
Have they got a place picked out where this is going to be?
Yeah, they do have a location in mind, I don't know if the sales is, if I know this guy.
Do you have anything to add, Lori, on that, or?
Nope, I can take the cover.
Any questions? Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, Town 101, on request, Chris?
Hi, I'm Chris with the Convention and Visitors Bureau, however, today I'm representing Town 101, which is the resident-driven projects from two years ago, and we started with this community meeting. The groups have four separate groups, and today I'm here representing economic development and tourism. And so if you've all got the letters, we've done extensive research.
Sorry, I'll put your quest form up there.
And so Little Minnesota has tried a few things, and they call them "pop-up businesses," and so I've been working with Initiative Foundation and these other groups. And the grant from December 23rd when it was awarded to the city was written for downtown revitalization. And this fell right underneath it, and I was moving really slow, had some baby steps going on. I wasn't that ready to jump into a project. However, my idea of putting businesses, entrepreneurs in the small shops that are open for sale right now and for lease would have been easy. I would have found ten vendors, made a deal with the building owner, and let it go. But instead, we have had, I'm inundated with volunteers. I have been pretty much donated the Thielen Appliance Building to the tune of $14,000 at no cost for this project. I have people painting, and they are going to make that building something beautiful. The people who own the building are the Percepios, and they will be doing the floor and the front, which went through the HPC this last month. And then the ceiling will be done by professionals. So the volunteers are coming in, Camp Brickley was going to throw away some tables and chairs, but repurposed items was exactly what we were looking for for setup. Because before, the small idea was easy, but now I'm looking at a roller rink of emptiness, and I needed to figure out a way to make that happen. So with our groups, we're combining Live Better, Live Longer groups, economic development and tourism. And with that said, Initiative Foundation's matching funds, in-kind and volunteer time, I think I've surpassed what the request is, which I'm actually in shock because of the amount that we're getting with this lease at no cost. So we are approaching different vendors or entrepreneurs, business people that make things that are Little Falls-centric residents. And at this point, we have about fifteen vendors that are ready to go. And what we want to do is essentially turn that space of the Thielen Appliance Building into a spot where people can now recreate, walk downtown, enjoy our downtown as it hasn't been enjoyed in a long time. And they did this in Wadena to a Woolworths building, the exact same project with about the same amount of space. We're at 8,000 space, I believe Wadena was 7,000. They made it work, and so I said to the Initiative Foundation representatives, I said, "I get it, I get the project." I said, "What's the measurement tool for the grant?" And they said, "Two to three years after the project has been started and over, those people that were in that space then found their own leases and their own places to rent and build in their downtown area." And so what it would do is populate our downtown, all resident-driven projects. And some of the funding that's in there, I have listed, the tables and chairs, we received forty-five really heavy eight-foot oak tables from Camp Brickley that do not fold down, and also 206 chairs, they were all headed for the burn pit, and instead we took them. And so we transported those with the help of Habitat and our residents and a few volunteers here and there. And so we have a logo for it, I have actually, if you'd like to, this is today's, today's discovery was "Who Likes Which One Better?" And so you can all have your own votes, but the bottom one got the most votes. So that is good, not my favorite, by the way. So the bottom one is going to be our Shops of Little Falls logo. We are going to turn that space into something beautiful and opening it up for vendors probably in the next week, so we can put 25 vendors in there. And when I say 25 vendors, I see repurposed furniture, I see metal art, I see lots of large things. And so I sent this out to approximately 50 people, and the bottom was the winner. My favorite one was all the bags, and only two votes came to me, so I don't get mine. And so with the help of everyone else, we're making this really great project into something that our locals may benefit from, may be a business owner on a street-side space downtown. I also made deals with everyone. The paint, we had $200 donated out of a $700 bill, so that's going to be in-kind matching donation. The wood, we're working at a 50% at-cost price with the local log people, I don't know, plywood people. But the money that we spend in this stuff will be made, and we actually have a good plan, since it is grant money, and I know it can be used for this, but there could be a secondary use for this stuff. If you're building a plant holder, you're building a space to sit, this could be donated to a park or a whatever when it's all finished, back to the city of Little Falls. So if that building is used for something different seven months from now, the products that were built with this grant money can be donated back for a different use. And so my request today is for a $5,000 request for the Tourism and Economic Development Group along with Carol Anderson has worked with the city and the school district, am I right, Lori? And she has an $1,800 application, half of the fee of what it costs at $3,600. She would like to also, and both groups and steering committees have all approved this, and hers is $1,800 for a total request today of $6,800 out of the $10,000 grant.
Chris, that $10,000 grant is meant for?
Downtown revitalization, and yep, and we have four groups. So this was the project in mind when the grant was written. And so Initiative Foundation has been holding our hand the whole time, probably a little annoyed that we asked so many questions. But I wanted to verify that we're doing the right thing, and we, so when it comes time for the report, we report our volunteer hours, our in-kind donations, the donation of the building, and items like that.
And the Initiative Foundation sets this as the criteria?
Yes, sir. Questions?
Any questions for Chris?
I think it's nice to see something happening, so the attempt at trying to revitalize downtown is a good thing in my part, so I'm excited about it.
I think it's a good idea, they showcase local business entrepreneurs, like you're saying, hopefully move into all the empty buildings we've down in town here.
Exactly, it seemed easier when I looked at the small spaces, but the roller rink is enormous. So peek in there when they let you, but they have now masked the windows.
They're doing work on the roof today.
They're doing roof, and they're doing it in front of the building, and there's lumber in there, and they wanted not to have that street side because there's a lot of wood, which is the subfloor on the floor. The building owner is working on that front window, that should be done by next week, which is a handicap accessible door front. They're leveling out the ground so those with walkers or wheelchairs will be able to come and go as they please. And it will now be flush with the rest of the block instead of have that small gap in there. And then they're going to professionally, apparently, hire someone to do the ceiling, that will be done. And then our volunteers will be working on the walls, and then the floor is last, all to be done by, we'll say June 5th, which really means June 15th, maybe. And we were looking for a grand opening of June 17th, and I believe with all of our fleet of volunteers, I can make this happen with the community's help.
Well, from what we heard, that building was in pretty tough shape.
It's already looking pretty.
That if the floors weren't level and that they had plywood blocked out so you could use it that this way and, yeah.
Well, there was a lot put into the facade on the front to make it look historic. And be ashamed to stick that money into it and then let it go.
Any other questions for Chris?
Tourism loves retail.
Hey.
And tap houses.
Thank you. Joint City Council Meeting update?
So following our joint city-county meeting last time, and we had a lot of discussion regarding ball garbage seemed to be pretty straightforward, they just wanted to make sure that we understood the position and the history of how the Morrison County landfill is got started, why we have the SCOR funding, SCOR grant funding that we do to help reduce waste and ensure that's going on. So I don't think that's a concern of ours, I think in our discussions, we're not looking to eliminate the garbage, or the recycling programs, and we certainly don't want to create any additional waste in our garbage, we just want to find better, better means for disposal. With the Humane Society, you know, the county does support the Humane Society, they have their, you know, the reasons for not, you know, taking on a further active role in funding it. I seem to understand the point that it's not something that mandated to do, it's not the, you know, like they are mandated to do solid waste, but they're not mandated to do dog and cat programs. So that their funding is really important to us because I think our, in my understanding, finance-wise, it's either going to cost us what we donate to the Humane Society to do that operation for us plus the annual pickup, or it's going to become a pound. And I don't, without knowing exactly what the cost is, I could suspect that operation of pound is probably equivalent to what we've already contributed in terms of financing to the Humane Society. So they're an important partner to us in terms of that operation. So as far as the parking lot goes, you know, I think we're all kind of still unsure of what we want to be moving forward. We understand the county's going to move forward with it anyways, but I feel it's a good opportunity for us to partner. I think it's a, if you put this scenario, if you put the project on its own, take the county out of it, put it in a different location, put the need for parking in our downtown area up and found a site with a, you know, a hazarded, a home with hazardous material or a building with hazardous material, we needed to clean that site up and turn it into a parking lot because that was going to be the best use of that area. You know, if we're going out to do that all on our own, it's not, it's going to cost us way more than the $65,000 estimate for building a parking lot on that site. So, you know, we'd have to worry about land acquisition, we'd have to worry about site cleanup, and we'd have to worry about, you know, me bringing the property back to a resort to a proper level so a parking lot can be built, and then build a parking lot. So, you know, noting that, granted, it's not, it's not our project, the company's been dragging it, the company's been dragging it, we didn't desire to do that. But I think there's areas where we also, as a city benefit, and we have funds in our, in a designated fund for parking lots to do something with this area, so I think it's a good opportunity in the sense we do share in the cost operation-wise with the library, and the library is, you know, does have on-street parking availability, but could really use some off-street parking in addition to what they have in the small mall, I think it's a good chance for us to work for. So that said, you know, it's something that's still up to the council to decide, I believe, or for procedures. If somebody that voted against it, if we did want to bring it forward, they would have to make that, to bring it on the ballot, so.
How much is in that account for parking lots?
I thought the last I saw was around 130.
Could be, I haven't looked for a while.
What do we use that money for, maintenance of parking lots?
Some maintenance, if we do an actual overlay or those kinds of things, we would use it, but otherwise, the money is there to build parking lots or if we, you know, completely rehab one, we'll use it for that. Normal maintenance like snow pounding and stuff does not come out of there.
I was thinking about this today, and we do have a need, and I'm looking at ten parking sites, you know, spots, which is roughly one quarter of that whole lot. We always talk about that, the library, us as a city, if we do pay for that, we're also paying for it through the county too, so everything they're investing, we're paying for that also. But as a need for, for what we have, you take one quarter of that, figure out what the cost of it is, you're probably pushing toward that six, it's not the problem.
If you do consider everything that the county has already spent on the lot, which...
If you do consider everything that the county has already spent on the lot, which I'm confident that the numbers they quoted to me are around two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
So we're actually getting a bargain on that and...
It's going to be pretty close there.
Yeah. And then if you say out of them, ten spots, part of it should have been the county's share as far as for the library. I'm looking at, I feel comfortable if we pay for six or seven spots or seventy percent of that quarter. To me, it seems like a reasonable for our needs, you know? And I wouldn't be too adverse to go up to one quarter of it, you know, that's just not that much money.
So factoring in the total project cost plus the anticipated cost of construction, you're between the twenty, fifteen to twenty-five percent.
Right in that range, because we do have a need and we need to do something there, we need to supply something and we're just not getting anywhere. We've been fighting this American problem there for years, you know, sitting on the library board, this discussion's been going on, just with me on the board for seven years, so, and it probably was before that, so it'd be nice if we could do something now and we do have an obligation as far as I'm concerned because our residents do benefit from that library and the county does, but all in all, we benefit a little bit better, so.
Well, it's our responsibility for the filling in the grounds, infrastructure and everything for the library. Just like the Humane Society is just our responsibility too and the library's another deal for the...
Which would fall in that twenty-five percent range.
Well, and the commissioners did bring up that if we did decide to go forward, that part of it could be in-kind because it might continue the work that Mr. Kimon has put into it. And if we continue with that, along with his plan, we continue working with the county, that would go towards the in-kind, towards our one-fourth, so, you know, probably get us closer to the twenty percent.
That's right.
Not that great.
You know, they say ten parking spots, but once the courthouse and stuff is closed, the rest of that parking lot, we open to the library. So you, after hours, you're going to benefit by having more parking spaces for the library because a lot of the activities that go in the library take place in the evening, so, you know, you're going to actually gain more off hours than you would having nothing there.
Pretty nice weekends, weekends or not.
Were they planning on putting some kind of light system in there to allow people to cross there safely?
Uh, no, there was no, there's no plans right now for active crossing. I mean, there's, there is a crosswalk there now, probably need some additional paint or some better defined areas. And possibly, another, another item that came up and we could talk about this further is maybe stretching out the space on the opposite side by the building, because right now it's a little tight where the ramp is, the pedestrian ramp, and cars get a little close there and it's, you know, stepping out into that visibility, you do kind of have to get out, get yourself into the street a little ways before you can see around a vehicle, especially if it's a taller vehicle. So I mean, that, that's some easy things that we could probably help do to get, get that started. I think you, there's always going to be an opportunity for active crossing signs or something else to better designate that as a crossing area in the future if it does, if it does cause a problem, but that's something you do need to talk to the mid-doc about too.
And Doc, or Chancellor, please hear, just keep those, the crosswalk things up there.
The little pedestals that sit in the middle of the highway, yeah, you definitely need to talk to the state about doing that because I ran into that problem in my, through a state highway. I said, "Well, no, you have to have all the, these X, Y, and Z in place before you can do that."
Would they, would they have signs there then, reserved for library parking or how would that be?
The county has offered that to, to, you know, and I've heard the quote of ten spots.
But I mean, they have some reserve where it says reserved.
Library, that's on the table.
Then also would incorporate the rain gardens that grant from the...
That's something we would absolutely be looking at, at utilizing if we did that because we would have to do some stormwater management with the parking lot site and the rain gardens is definitely an option with what we have in the property.
The only opposition I've heard is taking down the trees, but when you take a look at the age of them, trees and what size they are, guarantee you cut into them, they're starting to get hollow in the middle and they're probably reached their, get close to the extent of their life, you know, you have to be a realist of a tree isn't going to stay like that forever, so.
Not certain with the design, if there were any trees yet, we possibly say that they're...
All of them would do. They'd have to because if you put a surface over it where water can't soak, penetrate to the root system, it's going to kill them. So, but they are, get to be fairly old trees and then there's some box elder trees on there that probably should have been renewed years ago. I hate removing trees, I do, but...
Even if we don't participate, the county's going to do something and the trees are probably going to be fine, so.
What was available, were you thinking might be possible to get grants for the rain garden?
Ten, ten thousand was...
Yeah, we've got, that's part of the Sorloth Water Conservation District funds, roughly twenty-five percent will be local matched, the rest will be, will be grant funds available for, for use for that.
Not certain on an estimated cost and we have a comparable project.
Roughly, the rain gardens about four or five thousand dollars a piece.
Is that available on top of the stuff, is that ground in our packet? Or is that part of, was some information I got in our packet about a rain garden? Is that the same?
It's similar to that, those are for the two rain gardens that we're looking at putting in in conjunction with the three seventy-four project, one's on Third Street, the other one we provide the Initiative Foundation, but there are still some funds available through Sorloth Water that would be able to be used.
On top of that?
Yes.
So what do we need, someone to decide if...
Somebody to bring it back? I would, I'd make that motion.
So they had on earlier agenda? When they adopt the agenda, they had it that time?
My knowledge, I wanted to receive, of course I'll receive, you know, I wanted a decision that I want to make.
Yeah, I would say that if it's decided at this meeting or the next one, we're still within the construction season time, although I wouldn't be waiting too terribly much longer to risk getting somebody's...
Yeah, the one thing that I would say is the, the grant funds that are available for rain gardens, those are, those expire June thirty-first of this year, so we'll have to make sure we get that in place sooner rather than later so we can take advantage of that.
June or July?
End of, end of June.
End of June.
Yep.
What part of our, can use what we've done for in-kind contributions, how much of that?
Usually engineering is about ten percent of projects, so that goes from design out to construction, probably ten percent.
We should wait so we can figure out some of the details, John?
Yeah.
As far as the fine part, so we can be accurate with our motions if we're going to find the upgrade.
It looks to be fifteen thousand dollars off one way or another, so it'd be better to...
Probably.
Okay. Okay. Next slide?
Anyone?
Anybody else have any, any else to say?
Well, even on that too, we go, it'll be next Monday, if you wanted to, right, dig at it.
Yes.
If you want to, if we can down the hall, much of crunch time or whatever it is. Website request for full update?
So we got the RFPs all scored, this is based, we did a point system for some of them and then we did a ranking system for others. And finally with the points and if you, if you take the points and you take the ranks, what happened is that a lot of them just didn't quite meet our, our expectations in terms of what we're looking for, so most of the time after, once things got ranked, people stopped, stopped rating the ones that, that didn't fit that, so in order to kind of build a, an accurate kind of ranking system, they just got the same amount of points, they got the same rank the rest of the way through. The clear, the clear tops from the RFP selection review were Civic Live and Golden Shovel, Gov Office and Civic Plus also had some pretty high ranks among the rest and then Granicus was another one that was, that had a lot of other governmental experience and then beyond that, everybody else was pretty much, pretty much fell, fell by the wayside in terms of what we're looking for in the RFPs. So what I would prob, like to see is us move forward and get some design, further design requests back from some of the top RFP firms and then take those designs and compare those and then decide from there which, which firm we utilize for the website. Like in the, in the RFP, it was given about a two-week time ago after this to give us a design, kind of schematic to work with, but some did provide, provide that already, so I don't think it's something that's, would be too difficult for them to, to give us kind of a, I guess, template of what the website could look like and how we could, how we could function and operate and stuff.
Take Golden Shovel, that one did, Karisma?
Yeah, that's the, we meet, we meet again. They have some other cities, actually, I did, one of my college, grad school, excuse me, classmates is a city administrator in Centerville, Iowa, and they did Centerville's website and said, he had a great experience working with them in terms of just the development, getting everything prepared and everything since then, in terms of operations, had really, really positive things to say about them. I was the only one that I had a direct contact with, you know, my previous community, we had a Gov Office website, they're, they're pretty easy to manage, however, they're very much your site and you do all of the work with them, you do everything in terms of keeping them updated and populated, it's pretty easy to work with, but they're all pretty much stock and look very, very much the same. You can spend a little bit of money to get them customized on the, on the building in, but after that, it's pretty much all, all on you to relove, maintain, which is something we're going to strive to do much more anyways, we just don't have the ability to do that now. So the others, you know, Civic Live and Civic Plus, they look, they have very, very nice proposals, but I don't have a lot of familiarity and they didn't have any reference cities that I had a direct contact with, but certainly hand references, I said that we could have chatted to, but Five Parentses, they, they look like they're very high quality companies that do city governmental websites.
When I was looking through them, I did know some people from TJ Studio, so I thought it was going to be pretty good, but then when you go on and look at their website and you see granulated images and things like that on their own website, it kind of, to me, they're a forerunner at first, but it's kind of knocked them back.
Yeah, in terms of TJ Studios out of Brainerd, MPNG is the city's tall grass digital, is out of, you know, in the metro too, I think Dream Kind is another one that was in the area, the rest are all over the country. AE2S does have, they're national company, they develop offices in, in the metro.
Golden Shovel, I was surprised how well they did look. You know how you kind of fight yourself over, well, it's a local, it's, you almost feel obligated and so I was kind of steering away from them because of that fact, but when you look at their sites, they were pretty good. And then you start looking at...
And cost too is the other big...
The cost later on for maintaining them.
They, they were very good in terms of the upfront cost of, of the build and along operating costs moving forward, so I think they would be, that, that was another reason I thought they scored highly for me too, is that they were in the affordable range. In terms of comparing affordability, I'd say Gov Office is your, is your most affordable. Civic Live and Civic Plus were a little bit higher than Golden Shovel, but still pretty reasonable. Granicus was also quite affordable, the rest, the rest were all, other than TJ Studio, the rest were all above what I had actually even responded to in terms of our, our budget. And I said maximum twenty-five thousand, a lot, some of them came back with sixty thousand dollar proposals and, you know, obviously that just wasn't going to fit for, for what we did, we're a little wasn't impressed with it, well, it worked.
One of them didn't come back to you.
No, no, one came back to Dan Vogt, who I have no idea how, he wasn't listed anywhere in the RFP, I mean, his web name's not incorporated at all with this position on their website, so it's either they had a prior connection to him, but, but I'm surprised that, that was Granicus actually, so.
The ones that Craig mentioned and that I started looking for is misspelled words, misused words, they're putting on a website.
They're going to be responsible to be giving hundreds of pages of documents for us, making sure that they're not embarrassing. So, so is there a recommendation of how many of that ranking to, to kind of communicate with and get that template back? Because I would like to, I'd like to get back to them after this meeting.
What is the big drop off there, the top five?
Top five's all good.
Not too many.
In this, in the next two-week timeframe, probably not, but after that, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't want to work more with, I wouldn't want to ask further inquiries of more than two or three.
Was any of them over the twenty-five grand?
Um, I think Civic Plus was like twenty-seven.
Well, then, obviously can't follow instructions, so we want to go on our website.
I agree.
Said twenty-five grand, if they can't do it for twenty-five grand, they're at twenty-seven, so I would, you know, if that's the case, I would, if they're within our budget, then then...
But let me make sure that that's correct. I mean, I have no, no problem with the top three, I think all, all three have been, from what I've seen, are really good. And I have, you know, I have a reference for Golden Shovel and I have experience working with Gov, Gov Office sites and Civic Live had a very impressive, yeah, Civic Plus didn't have a twenty-seven thousand dollars worth of it.
After having gone through them, I'd be happy, which is one of the top three, two or five, and I ended up, you know, with two and then went all over, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. Granicus was nice.
That was the one that did say that I was going to go.
They kind of listened to me and, so there you go.
And Civic Live was twenty-two thousand, so just under. Golden Shovel was, they were under twenty.
So do we need a recommendation or you need a motion or consensus?
I would, I would take consensus and just move forward with that.
They don't have an issue with the top three? Sounds like top three it is, good luck. Water treatment facility improvements, Public Facilities Authority, update, Greg?
Tonight on your regular agenda, you'll notice that we do have, under the headings defined of it, the, the leg for water treatment plant improvements. If you recall at our last meeting, we kind of discussed regarding the PFA funds versus, versus the bonding, that's still kind of out there, we do have the application into PFA for, for our, our potential loan, we're looking to get through them. There are really two routes that we can go with for funding of the project, one is regular bonding, the other one is PFA. After speaking with David Drow, it seems financially PFA is, is the best route to go. We won't know until the middle of June when they get the final cut, so to speak, with the PFA loan funds.
with the PFA uh loan funds where their fundable range, ranges. So as cities uh continue to apply for it, their cutoff date and then they kinda rank all the projects and say, okay, down to this score is where we can actually fund, fund the projects. Tonight, what I'm recommending to the council is that we go ahead and award the project, assuming we get PFA funding. It'll take about a month for us to get all of the contracts and bonding requirements in place. Um in the unlikely event that we do not get funding through PFA, we're still going, we still have to go the route of uh funding for it for ourselves. But that would save us one month worth of time for, for construction. We've already had contact with the, the loan bidder on the, on the product, you know, construction, to see if they would still honor the uh, the deduct that they had to remove the PFA requirements. Uh and they indicated that, yes, they would. So really what, what this does is allow us to start the project, um get it moving forward, get the contracts, get the performance payment bonds in place so that they can get the paperwork done before any sort of work gets started and before we know um which route we're necessarily gonna go with the, with the project. But we know that it's gonna be one of two routes, ideally to PFA. Uh we gotta wait for PFA to let us know if we're in that fundable range.
Questions? Concerns?
How long do they, they're gonna take when they get started?
Eagles? Um they're supposed to start in September, uh and then they won't be done until March. So it'll take all winter. The, the problem that we run into is the lead time to get some of these components. So for instance, in the, in the PFA requirements, there's Bi-American Steel. The valves take twelve to sixteen weeks to get the valves in stock. And so that's kind of the, the kicker is if we, if we wait a month until we find out if PFA is available, now we push everything back a month because the valves have to get here before they can start to...
We need to do it over later, there's less water.
We have to do it over later when there's less water, yeah.
Anyone else? Just going down, dessert, pick them up.
They don't make that big, don't they?
You crazy? Onto public improvement three seventy-four.
The next uh three or four items here, I just wanted to kinda give the council an update on where we're at with the, some of the projects that we've got going on right now. But the three seventy-four project, that's going fairly well. Uh right now, we're working on the Third Street Northeast component of it. We've got the sanitary sewer all the way in up to the tracks. The water main is in up to Sixth Avenue from, from Fourth to Sixth Avenue. Uh we're waiting on Center Point Energy to relocate their, their gas main for that last block. And then we're gonna be starting on the storm sewer early next week to get that completed. We've got all the services tied in between Third and, or excuse me, Fourth Avenue and Sixth Avenue. Once Michael's is out of the way, they won't be able to do that, that last block and get the, the paving completed on that. So it's coming along nicely. Um I would say three weeks or so, we should be done with that stretch and then we'll jump to the other two at that point, but it's, it's going along good.
Any questions? Manhole rehabilitation?
Manhole rehab project, um if you recall, we're looking at rehabbing thirteen manholes on the west side of town in the areas where we're doing our pavement maintenance. Uh we have five of them completed. Uh we should be able to do the rest of those this week. We've got two crews working on that from Hydroplane this week and they should be able to knock all of those out. Once they're done with them this week, then next week, uh we've got Allied Blacktop incoming. They'll do the crack sealing and fog sealing over in that area. So we'll be able to basically go from one project to the next seamlessly and, and keep moving forward with our pavement maintenance over there.
Who's going to patchwork?
That would be Allied as well. Well, the patchwork girl on the manholes?
Right.
That's gonna be Tri-City maybe.
And the curb cuts or wherever there that subcut, fixing and that stuff's gonna be Tri-City?
That, Allied is the contractor that we hired. I don't know if they've got Tri-City or if they've got another um blacktop company to do that. But Allied is, is our contractor to do that.
Well, Chris not gonna do the tracks?
Twenty-seven.
Your maintenance update?
Haven't touched on that. Um the twenty-third is when Allied is planning to move into town to do the crack sealing on the west side. They're planning on doing that three days and then on Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is when they'll be doing the, uh the fog sealing to complete that. So it should only take them about a week to get that uh back and forth, the project completed.
Any questions for anybody? Golf course update?
At the golf course, it's going really well this year. Um we uh seeded number four, if you recall. Last year, we took down a bunch of trees, we raised the, the fairway in number four, bought some fill in there, added some, some topsoil, dug a little pond on the west side of number four to try to get the water away from uh, from the fairway. That's been completed, now we're, we're seeding it. And so we're waiting for Mother Nature to help us out with the warm weather to get the grass to start growing so that the golfers can use that. We've added some, some shrubs for some screening around a couple of the areas, the pump holes as well as over on hole number five. Uh so just trying to tidy things up a little bit uh through there, so. All in all, it's, it's coming together nicely over there.
Just glad I'm not golfing anymore, I would kill the shrubs.
Hear nothing but positive comments about...
Yeah, I bet.
The bad, bad trees were taken down, so it's easier to keep in the fairway.
Yeah.
But also just about Rich and uh, uh treatment of the customers out there.
Rich has been a great addition to, to the golf course, yes.
Will you let, if you're anything, being out there?
Well, I'm gonna go out there myself, so. My problem is four's gonna start looking too, too good. And I wanna, wanna see that grass and turf on the rest of the course. It's nice flat.
Yeah.
Smooth. It's gonna grow nice.
It is nice to hear positive things, does it have...
Yeah, and where are we at with the freezer repair out there?
That's been completed.
Yeah, so I can pick mine up anytime?
Yes.
They, they, I was actually out there when the, when the maintenance guy was, his last came in and we did find the problem. They, they didn't find it the first time, it was still having some issues. But it wasn't a, we caught it before it was gonna be a full loss. Um and that one, your freezer wouldn't have been able to hold everything that was on this one. So he caught it and it's, it's been working, working proper for the set, so.
Are we ahead with our number of memberships compared to the years?
Um I don't know, Lord, you know if we're ahead of the number of the memberships?
Um we're ahead of last year, yeah, but we also are, you know, the year started a whole lot earlier. You know, we started collecting memberships end of March first, part of April, where we typically wouldn't start collecting till now. But um so if you compare timeline, yeah, we're ahead, but we still don't have as, total number of memberships are not what they would last year. But they should come in now and maybe, I believe it's gonna start this week, right?
I believe last week.
Last week, so yeah, then, you know, the, the memberships will keep coming.
And I think that was probably for half of the golfers, maybe, you know, there's a lot of teams that show up.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's last week tremendously, it was, it was near washout. I mean, it was still played, but it was near washout. Um a lot of them either were not gonna play that night, play later in the week or didn't show at all. Uh you know, I would say half would probably be pretty accurate, which was the total of golfers. So there's a few there that we'll still have to pay. Um I would comment though in terms of the finances, uh we're way, we're way up in range balls, uh range use, uh we have a great start in uh greens fees and uh cart rentals for the year. Those are huge things to get because otherwise, most years, you're not gonna get any green, very much for greens fees, um and cart rentals and even range use up until this point in the year. And we've got a month and a half of, of solid use, so we're, I would say a full, financially, a full month ahead in that, and that's something that will continue to increase as the year goes on. Whereas memberships, yeah, you're gonna get a finite number of members. Uh we could get a lot of them paid early and that helps us look, look better in our break even. But the, the year total is gonna be determined by, by your green rounds played in greens fees and um cart rentals and green juice and those all are looking very strong. So, so that's, that's starting to stop well in the range production. So if we get membership increases, that's, that only helps us in the overall picture. So, so it was really nice to be able to take advantage, um having Rich on board, having everybody to be able to take advantage when the season was ready, early March, um to be flexible.
And I've heard of memberships coming back than it did after previous weeks, so.
I, I don't, not having the, the list from before, um it just wasn't all kept at all. So it's like I'm not gonna be able to tell you exactly in terms of those numbers, but I definitely have definitely heard that.
Any other questions on the golf course? Anybody got anything on their other? Very none, we'll turn to the earlier meeting at seven thirty.
Who's on you, Scott, for your tea?
I don't know.
Like they were consternation or something?
No. Oh, oh.
What did I hear, Jesus, that we're here?
Yeah, I'm done with that.